Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 21st, 2021, meeting of the Planning Board. We are in person again after about a year and a half away, so the band is back together. Hopefully, we remember the chord changes. But we don't have to give the opening preamble because we are not on a virtual meeting platform, so that's nice. Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is open forum. So I'll go to town staff. Jeff, anything that you have for open forum?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Great. Go to the board. Anyone on the board have any items for open forum?
I just wanted to thank everybody who actually attended town meeting. It was disappointing that fewer than 200 people were there. And for people who come from out of state or out of other countries, town government in New England is not a spectator sport. You don't just wave a hand, or you don't let everybody else make all your decisions for you. So I really encourage everybody to learn and to come, because it's your vote does count. And I'd like to thank everybody, both you, Dylan, and you, Bob, for, especially you, Bob, for the Herculean work you did. It's too bad that those people who were interested in drive-throughs didn't feel it was worth coming to town meeting. And they get what they get. And I think we've done our share.
I would agree.
So that's it.
Great. Anyone else? Any items for open forum?
Just, I will not be here for the July 19th meeting, so just everybody knows.
I will not be here for the July 19th meeting either.
So I had an item for open forum, which was that I had asked Jeff earlier today if we could put an item to discuss the email that everybody received from Jody regarding the state of Massachusetts allowing local boards and local government to still meet virtually if they wanted to through, I believe, the end of April 22. Jeff?
The beginning of April 2022.
Thank you. So I just wanted to put that out there so we could have a conversation about that and figure out, you know, our comfort level of continuing to meet in person, or if we wanted to discuss any of the flexibility that I think we've sort of alluded to. We've had some conversations around it being sort of great, you know, if a weather event, or if, as seems to be the case in July, if two members of the board were not going to be present, could we use the platform to still facilitate having a meeting if people were able to connect in from wherever they are? So I was hoping to do that next meeting, but perhaps it's appropriate if we spend a few minutes talking about that now, since we're going to have a, well, we might have an issue in July, Jeff, if we don't.
That is a possibility for anything requiring a supermajority vote. So I don't know if the two can't be present, would one be able to participate remotely if possible?
Well, I'm a third, and I will be able to participate remotely if I am remote.
So wait, who can physically be here if needed?
July 19th?
Yep. Just two? Oh, I thought it was three.
Just two.
Okay, that's great.
So we can't do, have a remote meeting with everybody like we did before?
No, I think legally you can do that. We just, we just really need to know that now, because we're already on the cusp of sending our public hearing notices.
Right.
They go out about a month in advance.
So it sounds like, I mean, Bob sounds like he's available even though he'd be remote. Kate and Darren, would you even be in a position to attend a virtual meeting if we opt that way? Obviously, if you're on vacation, you're on vacation.
I know. So I don't know, I don't know what I'll be doing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if I'm free, I could. I just don't, I can't commit to it.
Yeah, yeah.
I could.
Okay.
Every year I do this on my vacation.
Yeah, and you always say you're not going to do it next year.
That's right.
So, I mean, do we want to, well, I guess, what do we have? We have two options. If there's only two of us going to be able to be here, I guess we could...
Can we do, make it a different night, or is it too late for that?
I guess that's one option.
It's, so, I don't know if we should be necessarily discussing this at length in open forum.
Okay.
We could either schedule a special meeting where we can have a majority physically in attendance, or we can simply host a virtual, whether the scheduled night or even some different night.
Okay.
We just need to decide by the time that we publish anything, but unfortunately, you're also going to need to decide when you continue.
Yeah.
Your public hearing tonight.
Right.
Which is the next item, so.
Yeah.
Could we...
You could just commit to a virtual for that regular.
Yeah.
That might be the simplest.
I was going to say, we could also, if we wanted to continue this in email as far as selecting a date, we could just continue that to the July meeting, a time to be determined, right?
I think we have to make it specific.
No, you have to make it specific.
Oh. Well, all right. Do we want to say that the July meeting will be virtual, and it sounds like at least four of us could be in attendance, so that's...
Given tonight's air conditioning situation, I'll vote yes.
I'm feeling that as well. Okay, so Jeff, I guess that would, sounds like that's the will of the board, is to have the July one be a virtual one, because there'll be stronger attendance?
We can do that.
And maybe we can hold off, and we can have a conversation in the August meeting with, we're all back here in person again, and have a fuller discussion on this one that's on the official agenda.
Sure.
Great. Is there anything else? Anybody in the audience would like to speak at open forum?
I'm Ellen Hardy, over at 39 Main Street. I'm speaking, I guess, as a town meeting attendee and past moderator. And it has to do with the state statute that says that town meeting cannot act on any zoning changes until they have the report of the planning board. And that report on June 12th was simply an announcement that the board of, the planning board either supported it or opposed it, and the margin of the vote. Historically, that's not what a report of the planning board has been. And I'm here to urge you to go back to what it was. It was truly a written report that told the deliberations that the planning board had gone through. It's supposed to be an educational forum for the, for the members of the meeting. They don't know what the ramifications are of zoning changes, and you are the group that teaches them that. So if you've had a discussion where you've weighed the pros and the cons, and have had a discussion about why you either support it or why you oppose it, that's how the report should be presented to the town meeting, and it should be read by the chairman, who explains that, so that the planning board tells the town meeting why they have voted, as they have voted. And I would much appreciate it if you consider resurrecting that. It's been probably five, or six, or seven years since that's happened, but it struck me especially with one that was controversial on the 12th. I think that would have been really helpful to the voters, to have that information, so they know where you were coming from and why, because you have the expertise. So I hope that that will happen at our next town meeting.
Great.
And I think I could probably resurrect from the files, or maybe Jeff can, some samples of those that were given. Can't remember them all, but I do know that they have actually been narrative and have been informed.
Okay. I would appreciate seeing some of them. I don't know that I've ever seen.
I will see if I can, I can pull some of those out, or I'll ask the town clerk. I'm not sure how many. They should have been filed with the town clerk, because they are actually part of the discussion, the motion. So I'll try and remember the dates of a couple and see if Patty can help me find them in the archives.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time and for considering it. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Somebody else would like to speak for open forum?
Yes, I'm trying to, Green Needles Road. I'd like to just make this a request here per the planning board's meeting back on June 7th. We had talked about one of the standards in the proposed amendment for drive-through restaurants being that we could, I would like a amendment requiring any new restaurants or something, requirement to put in an electric vehicle charging station. And I think Ms. Hollister made a great suggestion of including more commercial industrial projects. So I'd like to ask the, the board to consider putting on a, an agenda, that particular item there, where an amendment could be added to the zoning bylaws, requiring EV stations, and all commercial and industrial projects additions or whatever. I think a lot of towns have instituted such infrastructure. I just saw last Wednesday, General Motors and Ford are going to go completely electric in a couple of their lines by 2035. So there'd be a lot of electric cars around with scarcity of charging stations. And I think it'd be great for Westford to be a leader in such zoning, as opposed to being a follower. So I ask you to consider adding an agenda item in the near future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks.
I guess in response, as well with that, is I think I'll be looking at probably no idling signage in more locations. That seems to be a very big problem in some of these shopping centers right now. A lot of idling taking place.
Jeff, with things like that, because they're technical in nature, would they have to be in a bylaw, or could they be in the rules and regulations?
What rules and regulations are you referring to?
Our, well, the subdivision rules.
That would only apply to subdivisions, so.
So it wouldn't apply to a lot of commercial, yeah, okay.
So I do think, you know, there were a couple of things that did come up as we went through the, the drive-through deliberations that I think were good ideas for us to think about in the overall context of the, of the bylaws in general. I think we, we sort of looked at some bylaws that had specific noise ordinances that weren't just limited to the major commercial projects the way that they are in our bylaw. So I think, Jeff, at some point in the future, I mean, we have very few meetings during the summer, so maybe when we get back into the full swing of things come September, October, we generally start talking about bylaw adjustments we'd like to consider, you know, ahead of the next town meeting, or certainly the spring town meeting. Maybe we can have a conversation that involves those things.
Sure. Whatever your priorities are, we'll focus it on.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks for the suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the other matter on that, I was going to, we could do it later on, do it now.
Go ahead.
In looking, when I read the stormwater management changes today, it occurred to me, and it talked about adding it to our rules and regulations. So the first thing I did was went out to our rules and regulations. And there's not a clean place where they're all gathered together. It's a little confusing as to which zoning bylaw might be, might be in effect. So I've suggested that maybe we have a better organization on the website to gather everything that's the planning board, current rules and regulations, under one folder. Obviously zoning, subdivision rules, et cetera.
Yeah.
And now the stormwater management rules.
Right.
So that's just my suggestion, something to work on during the summer.
We're happy to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, very good. Anything else for open forum while we're here? No? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our public hearing items. The first is PB 2130, a limited site plan review and a stormwater management permit for 33 Robinson Road, where we are doing, looking at and considering reconstruction or construction of three new multi-use tennis courts and six new pickleball courts. For this item, the applicant has requested postponement without discussion to the July 19th, 2021 meeting. So is there a motion to continue PB 21 to the July 19th, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Via, starting at 7:30 via virtual meeting.
Yeah, via webinar, yeah.
We have to say when and where.
I know. We have a motion and a second. We do not need to do a roll call vote, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 That was refreshing. All right. The second public hearing item is PB 2127, Stormwater Management Regulations. To amend the planning board rules and regulations for stormwater management, we initially heard this back on June 7th. We had some discussion there, and I believe we continued it to this meeting to continue discussion. So Jeff, what are the, what's the current news on this one?
So as the board may recall, the engineering department worked in their consultant. We made the most modest of changes in order to comply with the mandates under the town's MS4 permit. And right before the planning board meeting last time, we did receive some comments from town council. So we thought it did make sense to try to look at those comments and try to just make, address the comments related to the changes that were before them. So what you have before you tonight is just one clean set of red lines that brings us into compliance, kind of reduces the number of copies that we will be receiving, and it addresses the comments suggested by town council. So again, these are what we think are generally the most minor changes in order to be in compliance. And if the board does want to see something more substantial, we're more than happy to take a look in another public hearing process. As you know, we're just under, maybe Jeremy could explain, we are under the deadline.
Right now, our MS4 permit, year three, ends on June 30th. And this, this requirement by EPA was originally earlier in the permit, but it went through the courts, through mediation, and it got pushed to permit year three. So we've been, as Jeff said, working with our stormwater consultant for the past three or four months to get these regulations to a point where we feel will bring us into compliance. And unfortunately, you know, June 30th is the deadline for permit year three.
Yeah.
Certainly, we can come back later to time if the board wants to see more substantial changes, or if there's anything in there that's not incorporated right now, we could certainly do that as well.
Great. Thank you for the overview. Okay, so I guess we'll go to the board for any comments. Start down this end. Darren?
Cool, thanks. Jeremy, my, I think it's great that we're incorporating it. What's, what's the current stance for engineering right now? Is this a change you guys are going to have to make as of June 30th, or are you already incorporating these standards into your current review of projects?
So we're not currently incorporating these requirements into our review. Really, the most substantial impact that we may see to designs or stormwater designs is the new development and redevelopment projects. There's a new requirement for increased TSS removal and/or retaining for new developments and inch of runoff, so it means more infiltration. So right now, it's a different standard. We're going by the Mass Handbook, which hopefully at some point will be brought up, so it's consistent with EPA's MS4 permit. So there will be a little change there. You know, the thought was maybe we reach out to some of the engineers and the typical applicants, just to put them on notice that, hey, we have some changes here, it's going to affect you. And the engineering department could certainly work with them and kind of give them an overview of what we'll be looking for and what the changes are. But, but right now, to date, we've just been evaluating and reviewing in accordance with the current regs.
Okay. And that's, so say someone comes in, applicant comes in in the middle of July with a new project. Do the new standards apply because they, they come in in two weeks or three weeks?
So it's my understanding, if approved tonight, that it'd become effective to me. So the board has the ability, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, to waive any of the standards or requirements if deemed necessary. If we have an application that comes in, you know, tomorrow, you know, there's potential to be able to waive requirements, but I defer to Jeff on that.
Thank you, Jeremy. I think there is a provision where the board may waive some requirements. We have started reaching out to the usual cast of characters to let them know. We do have a short window of time. I believe it would become effective when it's clocked in with the town clerk's office, but we need your vote to do that, and we have to clock it in, not later than June 30th, or whatever day makes sense at that point, which isn't that far off. So I meant to clock it in. If you don't have it tonight, we can clock it in sometime early next week, I think, maybe to case something.
But just so I'm clear, certainly if an applicant had an existing project open, it wouldn't retroactively apply.
My understanding is they filed under the regulations that were placed at the time of the application. What we're worried about is new ones.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I have to think that engineering firms would know about this change that's coming, so I would hope.
I would hope that they would know that. So all right, great. That was my, that was my question, so thank you.
We've had some informal conversations, but we haven't really gotten into the details. You would hope that they would, if they were submitting an application, that they'd be reviewing the regulations.
Cool. Great, thank you. Mike?
I don't have anything. He asked all my questions.
Great. Kate?
Nope. I think the important thing is to get what you have out there. And in the, down the road, when you guys ever have free time, maybe in the winter.
Paul always says February.
That's what we said.
That's hockey, isn't it?
It never happens.
But since you are the experts on what the state regs are and such, and what others are doing, I think it would be more useful if, if there were things that you felt are missing or could help out, to let us know.
I mean, at this point, we feel that this addresses all of our concerns. There was a few things in there, just, you know, what needs to be included for, you know, submission materials, things like that, and some other wording that we've wanted to change for a while, but haven't had the opportunity. So we did make those changes. So right now, there's nothing that we foresee that will want changed, you know.
There's nothing that you would like to tighten up even?
No, we've, we've pretty much done that. Like I said, we've been working with our consultant for the past three or four months over the, so we have, it's, it's not only the EPA mandated changes, but there's other minor changes and tweaks that we've done, but mostly, mostly minor. I think the permit's been pretty successful and has worked pretty well over the last, you know, eight years, nine years that it's been in place, so we haven't had many difficulties. And so there wasn't really, you know, a lot of changes to be made.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Kate. Bob?
So I have a few. On the retention of runoff, I was reading, you know, Paul's opening letter. What's the period of time over which you, you look at that retention? You know, if you have two storm events back to back, one one day, one the next day, do you have to be able to support that one-inch retention for both days? Or, you know, there's no real specificity for that.
No, so in a stormwater handbook, they specify 72 hours. So if you have an infiltration basin, it's got to drain dry within 72 hours.
72 hours, okay. All right. Definition of an acre, is this the 40,000 square foot, or is it the 43,650?
43,650.
I'm just wondering if we should.
560.
What's that?
43,560.
560, I'm sorry, my mistake.
Sorry.
But I'm just thinking, we want to clarify that anywhere, because, you know, there's, that's a deviation from what we publish in our zoning bylaw.
So to us as engineers, that is, it's not a building acre of 40,000 square feet.
Okay.
And that, that hasn't been an issue, you know, with the stormwater calculations an acre is, that's how it's defined, so.
I noticed under 236, Sections B and C, they were looking for...
Reports assessing current street design, as well as report assessing existing local regulations. When is that coming, does that come due? Is that next year? So the street regulations, we're going to be looking at next year. We do have a contract with our stormwater consultant for permit year four, or it's actually a permit year three, but to, to look at that. But it's not, that's not due until, I believe it's permit year four, so that's not.
It's within four years, so we have to have it at the, if this is, if this is our, going to our fourth year, we're going to have to submit it, I guess, by next June 30th.
Correct.
So I'm just asking, that's, so.
So that's already under contract for our consultant to help us with that. We plan to start that this summer, so that we're not up against the permit year four deadline.
Okay. Next questions I had had to do with the surety bond. I'm assuming we're going to have two separate surety bonds here, one if it's a stormwater management system for a development, and one for, let's say, roads. They're not linked together in any way, correct?
Correct. To, to date, I think we may have used the surety for stormwater management maybe one time, because for, you know, if we have a subdivision, we already have that bond, which is capturing the stormwater infrastructure.
And that was, that was my question, how do we work that? And do we tie the two of them together? Because do you want to release the, the stormwater management, at least the road, or vice versa?
If, I could just jump in. So if it's a subdivision, the simplest thing to do would be to just treat it as part of the, your typical bond, because the stormwater would be an integral part of the development. So that should be, you know, taken care of with that surety for the subdivision. Where you don't have a subdivision, and you don't have an obvious mechanism to use, this gives you that opportunity to have it where, say you don't have a subdivision, and say you had a, a site plan, but there was a, you know, a substantial storm there going on. You also have other measures in place, such as, you know, obviously, they're not going to get occupancy or completion of their project, but if you assume the worst, you do have the opportunity to put in place a surety, even if it doesn't trigger some of the normal mechanisms.
Okay. Next question had to do with the definite, stormwater facility, because in zoning, facility evokes the thought of a, of a building. And I'm guessing in this facility would apply to all the structures and...
Yeah, typically we're referring to a storm in a facility. It's a BMP, it's a basin, you know, a bio-retention area.
So that's, that's obviously, so it covers those.
It's not building-related.
Right, just making sure. Okay. I had one question about why they deleted the criminal violation section in this that was redlined out.
That's all pinned, it's illegal. You don't have that authority. If it was in there before, take it out.
All right. Okay, thank you. And my very last question, under continuing inspections, I just thought it was interesting that we were the, a board that was placing the liens. And I was just wondering, is there some role here with the select board? Should they be factored in? Because I was never, I didn't know that we could place liens until I read this.
Well, it's your regulations, and you're the permit granting authority. It seems most appropriate that it would come from you folks.
Okay.
Just like if there was, you know, some violation... Just like if there was, you know, some violation for one of your decisions, you do have the arm of, say, the building commissioner to take care of it, but it's really sort of on your behalf.
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of subdivision and things, there's a certain point where, you know, we grant the permit for construction, but at some point, it kind of rolls over to the select board for some enforcement actions, and that's why I was asking, why had the discussion tonight about that?
I'm not clear about that. To me, a subdivision is your purview, and it's up to you to enforce. You have, the general laws refer to you, you're the board with the authority.
Okay.
This, this is one of the sections that town council added.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of a joint role that we should have with select board, or do we have to notify them if we're placing a lien on a property, for example?
I don't know that you do, but we can certainly ask.
That was mally, so. That's everything.
Okay. Great. That was a very complete list. I don't have anything beyond that, so I guess we're at the point where I would undertake a motion to approve.
I move that we close.
Can I just note that there's no members of the public in attendance with questions? Thank you, before you close the hearing.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Kate.
I move that we close the public hearing for PB 2127, Stormwater Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on PB 2127, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm still not used to.
That's so efficient.
I know. And now, would someone like to move to approve amending the rules and regulations for stormwater management to reflect the latest United States and EPA general permit for stormwater discharge from small, separate storm sewer systems, MS4 permits, to keep the town in compliance with its MS4 permit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Abstained? Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay. That brings us to the end of the public hearing items. We're on to general business, and we have a review of draft meeting minutes from May 24th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 24th, 2021?
So do.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these minutes?
Nope.
Nope? I didn't have any.
No.
They looked right to me.
Correct.
Great. Okay. So seeing no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh, there was, a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
One other matter I just wanted to revisit, I should have mentioned it during open forum.
We're on reports and updates.
Okay.
That's perfect.
We did receive a letter from Bill Harmon after town meeting.
Yep.
And so I did call and speak with him on that. And I, I think it was interesting because what he was talking about was now that the senior residential multifamily overlay district did not get amended to include the Merrill's Quarry Parcel, he wanted to consider rezoning that from industrial to residential A. And what that would allow is with, as we know, with the industrial C, which is, not all of it, but the majority, that would may, mean that you could go from 100,000 square foot building lots to 40,000. Hadn't really thought about this as much during town meeting, but what that does is it's, it's still only half the capacity for the current site. And as I pointed out to Bill in our discussion, it doesn't address Kate and Anita's concerns for affordability. In fact, it probably makes it more difficult to address affordability, given what we expect to be some pretty extensive site construction, prep cost, preparation costs. So I don't think that you can do it. It, it might feel good to say it's residential, but it doesn't really scratch the itch we have. And unfortunately, it also doesn't let us address the safety concerns for that site.
Doesn't save the trees, right?
Doesn't save trees.
Right, it's, you know.
I did.
The ability to control what we could have controlled was, was come and gone.
Yep. I did point out that our concerns wasn't, you know, when we voted against the trees at town meeting, when we were expressing our concern, it wasn't that we don't want to save trees, it's that we need a more precise definition of what trees are being saved. There was no reference to, for instance, the caliper, no reference to what the replacement trees had to be in terms of size and height, no reference in terms of where the trees could be placed. After talking with Bill, I think he was in agreement with my concerns that the place where we're removing the trees on that site is the most ideal location to put trees on the site, and that the rest of the site that's fairly rocky and barren, it, it does not make a really good place to transplant some of those trees. So to do that, we need to have options for off-site locations, not as much onsite. The site is just a challenged site. So I think, you know, we came to a good agreement as to, you know, what the concerns were, but we don't have a solution here. In fact, I think we're in a worse place. Bottom line is we're not addressing the, this, this safety of our youth that are being exposed to that danger up there. And we are, every day in this town, we seem to be getting further and further away from affordability as house prices continue to escalate pretty dramatically. So I just want to state that, because I did have a half hour discussion with Bill on this.
Thank you for calling.
Yeah, thanks for calling back.
No, it was a good discussion, and it was really kind of enlightening as we hammered out the topics that we aren't really going to address this with a change to residential A. And I don't think the town wants us to change it to residential B, so.
No.
Bottom line is, an acceptable senior mod has preferential aspects if we can get to an understanding about affordability. And, and not just SHI affordability, but actual affordability for the masses in that kind of a development, so. That's all I wanted to say.
Speaking of Merrill's Quarry, I really, I think now that town meeting's over and the petitioner has received feedback, I hope that he will consider continuing the possibility of coming back. Since we did vote favorably, we can bring it back within two years. But, but, you know, he, this would give him more time to think about what he really wants to do and, and learn more, now that he's learned more about the site and the additional constraints that they didn't know about before, like with wetlands and such, and, and the issues that people are going to want him to, to address and think about, you know. I, I think it can be a win-win situation, so.
And I mean, I think there was a positive aspect there in terms of that ball field that was going to have a large amount of time available to our, especially those that are at the Reed and Miller School.
Yep. And I think he satisfied, satisfied many of the abutters that I spoke with. And it's unfortunate that, you know, people just don't attend town meeting, and there's a group of people that do, and they get to, because it's not well represented, that a lot of people were for this, but didn't feel they had to go and vote, you know?
So there's also, flaw is a strong word, but in the bylaw, I mean, that applicant, in my opinion, followed the bylaw's set, you know. Any complaints about, you know, the level of affordability, and I understand that's a totally valid concern, but the applicant came in trying to check all the boxes of what the bylaw told them to do. And the problem is, some of the site design and the analyses cannot be done without benefit of the very expensive, on-the-ground field survey after you do the wetlands delineation. Can you imagine trying to tell a prospective applicant who can't even buy it yet, because it's still subject to the right of first refusal by the town, that you're going to have to spend perhaps tens of thousands of dollars to just ask the question because they need more info? So it's, it's an awful lot to ask for someone to just ask that question, to spend all that money. And, you know, if we want to encourage more modest or affordable housing, then, you know, we're going to have to maybe explore some options created by the recent amendments to 40A, which we'll be having discussions about at a future meeting, because they came in trying to work with the bylaw and it didn't, didn't work. And it checked a lot of boxes, but it checked some boxes for other people, but those boxes weren't spelled out in the bylaw, so.
And I think there was a misunderstanding about what was required to go to town meeting versus what is expected to submit an application. Some folks thought that there should have been more detail.
And maybe, that's our fault, you know, maybe we should have had a more detailed report.
Right.
So when I got back from Connecticut, I did watch town meeting in fall, and it did seem like the conversation really devolved into really getting into a site plan, and somebody did at one point stand up, I think Mike Green might have even stood up and commented that we're getting into, starting to discuss site plan, we're not really talking about a conceptual plan here.
George Murray.
Yeah, right. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, that is who, yep.
Yeah.
And he was right, so.
I think the other thing that I don't think they understood was, we can do this rezoning, it doesn't mean that we're accepting this applicant to execute the project. It also doesn't mean that that property has to be developed with this project. It just provides one more option for how that parcel could be developed.
But if you don't, if you don't, if the planning board doesn't work with the proponent ahead of time, but before it comes to town meeting, then there's really not a lot, any really wiggle room after the overlay district gets developed to, to work with somebody who comes before us, because it is a site plan review. And, and that's, it's not like a special permit where we, we can say, we don't like this, we don't like that. We can do that before it goes to town meeting to let him know these are the concerns.
But again, back to Jeff's point, I mean, we, we can't really, right? Because he's going to come in and say his maximum's going to be 94 units. Well, you go up there and do testing, and you're not going to get 94 units, you're going to get 30 units, and then his whole price structure changes and affordability for him to build it and.
Yeah, but then he, he needs to look at what, you know, whatever his offer was for the parcel as well. Did he over, overestimate the value or something? I don't know. You know, that's for him to also think about, should he be buying it for less?
And one of the questions I did hear at town meeting, I don't think people understood the emergency access facts. So that was something that needed to be made more clear in a report or in their presentation. Because there really were, there really are two options for emergency access for that site. You could take the approach that was done with Stone Ridge, the villages of Stone Ridge, or they could leverage that emergency access, they had to that applying parcel, which I think the butter was, was not real keen on.
And fire wasn't keen on it either, because it went through their, on their driveway.
But villages of Stone Ridge, if you know, that boulevard.
Yep.
Was what we accepted back in, I think, '04, '05.
Yeah, there have been, my understanding in the last 20 years, there have been some changes in terms of how fire department examines essential access. So what might have worked a long time ago may not satisfy today, I don't know. I wouldn't presume, we would definitely ask for comments in writing from the fire department.
And what might work for emergency access to that industrial site might not be acceptable to the fire department for a housing site with 90 units of senior housing. Right.
Right. All right. Anything else in correspondence or updates?
Nope.
Great. Then, then is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good work. Getting back into live.